Good evening, Washington Courthouse. It is seven thirty P M. on August ninth, twenty twenty-three. Time for our first regular meeting of this month. At this time, I have the invocation and Mr. Johnson will lead us into the pledge. If you're able, would you please stand? Dear God, we thank you for another beautiful day. We thank you for the opportunity to come together this evening as council members to discuss issues, to think about issues, to listen to others. And God, we just appreciate those who take the time to come and express their opinions. Just now, we ask that you continue to bless us, our families, the community. And God, we just pray that you help everyone in this country to better work together. So not only communities like ours, states like ours, but our entire country can grow and work and be better. We pray all these things in the name of your son. Amen.
Amen.
My pledge is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Roll call, Kelly.
Hawk.
Here.
Hernandez.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Schultz.
Here.
Blair.
Here.
Crispin.
Here.
Lynch.
Here. We have the minutes from the regular council meeting on July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. Three of us weren't here. Kenji and I were on vacation, and unfortunately, Steve was at a funeral. But any rate, does anybody see any issues, especially those four of you who were here with the minutes? If not, one of you four want to make a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the minutes of seven twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
Thank you.
Roll call.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Upstain.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Upstain.
Blair.
Yes.
Crispin.
Yes.
Lynch.
Upstain. Okay, we have communications, Mr. Denon?
None.
Report for council committees, economic strategies and cooperation. I have down that Caleb led that meeting. Caleb?
There you go. You got it.
It's a very long hair.
You're up.
The Economic Strategies and Cooperation Committee met in the council chan- uh, city council chambers of one oh five North Main Street on Wednesday, July twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three, at five P M. Mr. Caleb Johnson presided, and those in attendance were Mr. Jim Crispin, council member, Chelsea Baker, Economic Development Director, Mr. Joseph Denon, city manager, Mr. Sean Remington, and Mrs. uh, Mrs. Rochelle, is it Treps, ci- citizens. The committee reviewed progress with industrial development. The committee noted that there were forty-seven open projects. Committee next noted that Ms. uh, Mrs. Baker would be serving as Rotary President in the twenty twenty-four year. The committee noted the status of various development projects within the downtown area. The administration advised the committee that a new business plaque had been presented to Simply Ageless and Cryotherapy. The committee benefited from a review regarding downtown events. The administration advised the committee that Farm to Fork event was a great success and noted the event coordinator's interest in hosting the twenty twenty-four Farm to Fork event downtown. The committee noted the upcoming Battle of the Bands event to be held on Friday, August eleventh. The committee noted the upcoming Art in the Square event to be held on Saturday, August twelfth. The administration advised the committee of a potential purchasing interest in a downtown building. The committee noted that August thirty-first, twenty twenty-three was the closeout date of the facade grant. The administrated note, the administration noted that discussions were revisited with the Board of D D regarding local workforce opportunities within the community. The committee noted the grand reopening of Woods on August first, twenty twenty-three. The committee benefited from a report on a land planning commission from Gosman Engineering on Bryant property. The committee reviewed progress with commercial development. The administration advised the committee. The committee benefited from a review of Trail Connections progress. Respectfully submitted, myself, vice chairperson, Economic Strategies and Cooperation Committee, and Mrs. Kelly Ford, reporting secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson. Does anybody have any questions?
I, I, I do a number seven. Could one of you four kind of give me an update on the administration advised the committee of potential purchasing interest in a downtown building?
May not be able to discuss.
It's a private person.
Okay.
Made an offer to another private owner.
Okay, so, all right, well, we'll find out later then. Thank you very much.
Anything else? Does someone want to make a motion to accept those minutes?
I show them the second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Upstain.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Upstain.
Blair.
Yes.
Crispin.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yeah, Upstain. Okay, then we have finance and personnel, Mr. Ford.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Finance and Personnel Meeting held July the twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three. Finance and Personnel Committee met in the city council chambers at one oh five North Main Street on Wednesday, July twenty-sixth, six P M. Mr. Jim Blair presided, and those in attendance were Mr. Jim Crispin, council member, Mr. Caleb Johnson, council member, Mr. Ted Hawke, council member, Mrs. Christina Collins, Finance Director, Mr. Joseph Denon, City Manager, Mr. Sean Remington, and Rachel Tureviz, citizens. Number one, the committee benefited from a report on the statement of cash for the month ending June the thirtieth, twenty twenty-three. The committee benefited from a report on the investments of the city of Washington Courthouse. Mrs. Collins noted that L G S had been working with software solutions to complete the gap conversion, had been completed. Has been completed?
Have been.
Has been.
Has been.
Has been completed. The committee benefited from a report on personnel issues given by Mr. Denon. The administration advised that interviews had been completed for the Open Tax Department position. Mrs. Collins noted that the financial audit would begin at the end of August. The committee noted that the new patrol officers at the Police Department were doing well. Committee noted that the new firefighters at the Fire Department were doing well. The committee recommended that legislation be brought to council, recommended the appointment of Mrs. Julie McDonald to fulfill the unexpired term of Mr. Donald Moore to the Board of Zoning Appeals. The administration noted that contact would be made with Mrs. McDonald to confirm her desire to serve on the board. The committee recommended that legislation be brought to council recommending the reappointments of Mrs. Elizabeth Gerber, Mr. William Harris, Mrs. Jean Anne Davis, and Mrs. Margaret Hall to the Carnegie Public Library Board. Committee noted that the administration had been reviewing possible green space funding from the O P W C to be used for trail extension along Paint Creek. Committee benefited from an update regarding Central Ohio Health Insurance Consortium. The administration noted that the department head reviews have been completed. The administration advised the committee of continued project interest. The administration noted tax incentives for Project Crane, and the committee noted the benefits of a possible new company within the community. And lastly, the committee benefited from a report of the Human Resource Department. Respectfully submitted, myself, Mrs. Kelly Ford, reporting secretary.
Thank you, Mr. Blair.
Yes, sir.
And do we have any questions?
I, could I just ask one question myself? Uh, we have, oh, the uh, position to fill in the Tax Department. Did she accept the position, the one that you would recommend?
Uh, yes. However, she did request a little bit of additional time. Uh, she, uh, one of her clients is currently, uh, a family that has some special needs, as I recall. Uh, if I remember right, uh, it might involve, uh, grandmother raising kids, and she asked for some additional time to wind that down, and we said yes.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Any others? Somebody want to make a motion to accept?
I show them move.
Second.
Thank you. Roll call.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Upstain.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Upstain.
Blair.
Yes.
Crispin.
Yes.
Lynch.
Upstain. Okay. City manager, you are up, sir.
Uh, we're very happy that paving is finally done, and we're incredibly pleased with the surfaces on Court Street. Uh, some of this will be a repeat of what's heard in committee. Uh, that, a couple of sections that were not done at the end, those occurred a little bit later because some of that asphalt did not pass test. So obviously, we didn't want to put it down. Uh, so that is a little delay there. Then you'll move on to striping. Uh, the striping on Court Street, that's part of the cooperative project with ODOT, so as soon as they finish some of their, uh, paving work, then we'll move on to that, and we'll be putting down that plastic striping. It just wears a whole lot better. Uh, and it looks a lot nicer, too. Uh, you have two legislation-related, two annexations. Uh, you have fifty acres in the industrial park out on Old Chillicothe, in which the city of Washington Courthouse is the property owner of that property. Uh, that would be, we'd go to Planning Commission later on, get an industrial zoning for it because that would be contiguous to industrial area and proceed in that fashion. Uh, you also have a very large annexation, uh, legislation related to it, and that would be the Bryant property. Now, some of the Bryant property is already inside the city of Washington Courthouse. They acquired, uh, some ground, oh, a year and a half ago, uh, from Larry Bergman. Uh, Larry retained, uh, the commercial area that is yet to be developed, basically around Home Depot. He sold off to Bryant, uh, the residential portion, but then you're, you're taking the municipal boundary out a little bit further, quite a bit further, with the additional acreage that you will be annexing. In fact, I think it's the largest annexation in the history of Washington Courthouse. Uh, but we talked about it in committee, and that gives us a wonderful opportunity, uh, to do really very effective, uh, planning of that area for its development, uh, primarily residential. Uh, what we're looking to accomplish there, uh, is an area that provides some housing options that don't currently exist in the community. Uh, things like row houses, along with the addition of the more traditional single-family lot, uh, in a variety of sizes out there with plenty of green space. Uh, and it done in a way that works in the long term, that is faceable for a developer, easily faceable, and something that we're aesthetically very happy with. Uh, and you have enough space out there, you can do that, and you can do it with a nice reservation of green space. Uh, in fact, the amount of green space that you'll have out there, uh, we're going to recommend to you that a little bit later down the road, you develop something like a community authority, uh, which would generate some revenue from folks living in that area to take care of the green space, which has a direct impact on them, so that cost isn't spread on to the rest of the community. Because quite honestly, uh, the scale of what we're talking about there, uh, service would not be equipped to do now. It would be a real problem. Uh, but that will allow us to look at things on a nice, long timescale. Now, in the annexation process, what you have in front of you tonight is the Services Resolution, uh, which simply says that we are agreeing that we will provide the area uh, public services, meaning police, fire, street, uh, et cetera, like we do the rest of the community. Uh, a few steps later on, after you get a zoning recommendation from the Planning Commission, uh, there's an ordinance that finalizes the process that you'll have to, uh, pass if you so choose to complete the whole annexation. Now, how that develops over time, I would rate it as highly unlikely that even a very large housing developer would conclude, uh, I think that this plan is perfect, and I want to do it all at once. Now, planned unit development, what was, that is what was used for the Home Depot area. So what would occur if they wanted to tweak that plan? They got to go to Planning Commission and get a favorable recommendation to do that. Uh, and then, because that area is so large, that development occurs over time, uh, probably, uh, at least a twenty-year timeframe. Because you could have conceivably eight hundred housing units out there between seven fifty and eight hundred. Uh, so that is something that occurs over a long time horizon, but there'll be a nice, comprehensive plan for the whole area and how it develops, and everybody have a very clear idea of, uh, what the concept is. Uh, but again, one of the major goals is to provide a higher diversity of housing options than we have now, and for it to be done in an area where functionality and the aesthetics of it, you have the opportunity to start at a clean slate, uh, which is, uh, something that we very much enjoyed. That's why we talked with a professional land planning firm about it, uh, and are going on from there. Would like to compliment the Jeffersonville folks and the county commissioners. We had a recent discussion with them about long-term transportation planning for the county, uh, primarily focused, though, on Washington Courthouse and the Jeffersonville area. Uh, has things like Honda develop? Uh, we need to think about how people efficiently and safely, uh, move around the community, about how that that works. And we thought about that a great deal, uh, with the mega side area. Uh, in fact, I think I pointed out earlier, C I C was actually the first entity that funded the first preliminary engineering study of that area. Uh, however, uh, that plan for the entire county is going to have to become more detailed, uh, and has events like Honda develop, that is something that you would periodically look at and modify, so that works in the long term, so you avoid problems. Oh, Central Washington Courthouse would be a good example, where you force a tremendous amount of traffic on Court Street. If we thought about that a little bit differently about fifty years ago, uh, it would have been real helpful, because you can create situations that are quite difficult to fix later on down the road. Uh, now, a lot of that can be things like thinking about, uh, what existing corridors need, the size of right-of-way that they need. It doesn't necessarily mean that you have to build, uh, more than you need twenty years ahead of time, uh, but that you at least have the right-of-way to do that, so that you don't have a major issue on down the road and run into problems that are either quite expensive to fix or quite difficult to fix. Um, and the Jeffersonville folks in the county, they, they've been very nice and wonderful, and we're very pleased with that. Thank you very much.
Any questions? Okay, the director of finance is not here, but the city attorney is?
Well, I'll talk a little bit about grass, as we always do. We have, we've been laying about thirty-five yards a week for the last four weeks. You would think at some point in time it would stop, however, with the ongoing rain, the grass keeps growing. Also, we have twenty-four cars on govdeal.com. It's a fourteen-day option, and, uh, it started Monday, so, uh, if anybody wants to buy a car that we towed off someone's property, then, uh, get on govdeal.com.
They sit in over at the lot?
They are.
Aunt Lambers? Okay. What kind of warranty, sir, do you give?
As is. As is.
Do they come with a fresh oil change and new tires?
Maybe no tires.
Maybe no diapers. Maybe no oil.
Jim, I think it's a fifty-fifty warranty, but breaks in half before you get it off locked, you could keep both halves.
You keep both halves. That's a good one, Jim.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, we're up to local residents, and I see we have two Barnhills that wish to speak. You are up. If you will tell us your name and address, for the record up here, obviously, I have it written in front of you, but.
Diane, since she's going to stay there.
Oh, okay, well, you go ahead.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak to you. Uh, many of the residents in Quail Run are continuing to be concerned about the development at the end of Farmington Lane, and that the proposed development is contiguous with that, with Quail Run, which all those homes are on single-family lots, the lowest density in your, um, city code concerning single-family dwellings. And continues this, his proposal, as I last heard it, was for seventy-two apartments on six acres, which works out to thirty-five hundred square foot per dwelling, including roads, parking spaces, uh, uh, green space, the whole thing. The lots, minimum lot size in Quail Run is fifteen thousand square feet, except those that are R one B, which is ten thousand square feet, there's a few of those. And we're also concerned about if this goes forwards, the construction traffic that would be going up and down Farmington Lane during the construction phase. Uh, that's a narrow street. I don't believe it was ever designed to be a thoroughfare like it would become if this apartment complex is, is developed. The, uh, the R three zoning that was put in place back in two thousand, and no one that I've talked to knew anything about that change. It was, uh, Ronnie and Charles Rivers owned it, and they owned a lot of the continuous pro- contiguous property with that. So it was quietly rezoned, quietly, not secretly, uh, from B three to R three. And I believe it was B three because it's a long U S thirty-five. It's a noisy location, it's downwind from prevailing winds. So if you ever pull over over there along with the freeway, you, you can see that that's going to be very noisy and not, in my opinion, that's just my opinion, conducive for residential dwellings. I think that's why it's B three, and also I think it had planned access to Leesburg Avenue. But when Farmington Lane got strung out there, extended out there, that's when the change was made, and it sat idle for twenty-two years. And so, uh, the R three does allow, uh, condominiums, it also allows multiple family structures having two or more dwellings. Now, if you put two or more dwellings on forty-five hundred square feet, which is a standard size for that, you're talking about a lower-density housing, not the, uh, twelve units per acre that would be, that is proposed. And, uh, you know, the, the purpose of R three zoning is, it was established to accommodate multiple family residents, that overall housing densities consisted with those in the area. And those in the area is R two, the condominiums, and R one, the, the largest lots in the city. It was undeveloped land, and that's normally what happens with that, and it did. And it's to provide, uh, for the continuous redevelopment and/or limited expansion of multiple family developments in the area, best equipped to accommodate such higher-density development. And I think many, many of us, I've talked to many of the people in the area, are very concerned about changing the neighborhood, the, the quality of life in the neighborhood, the additional traffic, and, uh, property values, of course, are always a concern if you own property. And we just are asking the city to come to some sort of agreement on this property that doesn't allow seventy-two units, apartment units, to be constructed on this property, contiguous with Quail Run. And that took thirty years to develop, and people have spent a lot of money improving their properties. It is a nice area, and I don't have anything against rental properties. I graduated from college, I lived in a, in college, I lived in a rundown mobile home, I lived in two different apartments and a tiny house. And then I gradually have moved up and have moved to Quail Run. So I have nothing against it, they're in need, the community needs affordable housing, but just it needs to be in the right place, so that there's not winners and losers. And I'm just concerned that one developer is going to win, and the two hundred and twenty or so property owners in Quail Run are going to not see any benefit at all from this.
Anybody have any questions, Mr. Barnhill, or any?
Well, I have, brought up the question as you were speaking there. You, this may be for our city attorney. Once a zone, zoning law is in place, is it possible to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals and appeal that?
No, the, the, uh, current owner, the new owner, purchased the property based upon what he believed or she believed the zoning to be. So the purchase price was based upon zoning. Uh, so that's, that's what's at.
My issue is that it's an R three zoning, but the zoning board would have the right to restrict the, you know, within the confines of that. In other words, you can't tell him he can do anything other than two families, two family structures up to seventy-two, which would be the absolute maximum. That's based on six acres at thirty-five hundred square feet per unit, that's six acres. Uh, would have the authority to say, whoa, wait a minute, we've got traffic, we've got, uh, joining use. If you read this ordinance, that they could say, no, but bring us something more reasonable. Um, I think that's, I don't think that it's fair to all the residents. Sometimes things in life aren't fair, but in this case, it's affecting a lot of people. And I don't think anybody at Quail Run ever expected or knew that this would happen.
Does anybody have any other questions, comments?
Just my understanding that we, there, I mean, our hands are tied, am I right? And that's why I continually, I think in the past, said, you know, it, it really needs to be a negotiation between property owner and property owners.
We understand that, but you are the elected officials.
Right, but if we don't have a legal, if we don't ha- we don't have any legal legality in doing this, I mean, I.
Abiding by your own ordinances. You're ignoring your ordinances for one man.
So whatever, unfortunately, we're not bound by the ordinances as much as we are by the Constitution. I mean, it's a taking. Whenever you force someone to, uh, lose out on the benefit that they purchased the property for, that property was zoned that way, from my understanding, for a very long time. And none of us, if someone were to purchase it, would oppose it being changed to something else if that person or group who purchased it came to us and said, hey, we want to change this for the future to make it a better fit for Quail Run. So I guess what we're saying is we're willing to do our part, but we are bound with what we can do before the property is exchanged in such, such a way, if it was exchanged in such a way. You'd have to purchase it from him. You'd have to purchase it from him, and then whoever owns it can bring it and get it changed by doing the normal zoning application process. That's the way that, that we are, are bound to do it by. And so, we're not disregarding what you're having to say, we don't even disagree, we agree, it's just, there's only so much that we can do.
So you're saying that it's already a done deal? Is basically what you're telling all of us, right?
No. I'm saying that there's still an option, but you all would have to come together and work together to get the property. And it's probably gonna want some sort of financial showing for it, so some sort of profit, like any business owner would.
Okay. Well, it just seems like the, the ordinance discusses what's permitted. I just don't, I, I see, I see your point, is that the owner who bought it says, well, I can put in seventy-two, take six acres, times forty-two thousand, forty-three thousand two hundred and eighty, divide it out, it's thirty-five hundred square feet, I can get seventy-two apartments in there. But it's not, it's not meeting the spirit of the ordinance, which is, the density is similar to the adjoining properties, so it's kind of ignoring the rights of the, of the two-hundred-and-twenty property owners that live in that area. They're kind of being ignored in this, even though the, and the ordinance says R3 is consistent with adjoining development, properties there in that area, Trotters Point and Quail Run, and this is not. And that, you know, you're making the argument that that doesn't matter.
Unfortunately.
I mean, I don't think anyone up here is comfortable with it, but it's, it's what it, you know what I mean, there's, there's only so much you can do. And we don't have any, I mean, Mark and I have had continual conversations about it. I've, I've asked him multiple times, and...
Have you researched the law on this, on, on Attorney General opinions or legal cases?
Well, he's our attorney.
With respect to this?
That's not my job, that's his job, and that's why I had the conversation with him. But, you know, I, I hear your complaints, I mean, Dale was right in the neighborhood, so he, I, I know he would do something if he could legally. I mean, it's unfortunate. You know, what's unfortunate is it happened way before most of us, and it sat there, I mean, that, I mean, basically, it's the developer who researched it and found it, you know what I mean? It's been sitting there for how long? Forever. I mean, twenty-some years, it's zoned that way.
I think...
Is it true that that is not a natural hill? That he's building it?
There's been discussions that there's up to twelve feet of, of a...
Which means it's a construction debris?
Yeah, of a soil dump when the highway is constructed. And that it would create, create some problems for building structures on there because of the foundations. I don't know if that's true, that is...
My guess is, Hugh, that most of what the hill is composed of, a, a good portion of that, this is just my personal observation, is more than likely subsoil from when Farmington Lane was constructed. And at that time, there, there were, probably wasn't a tremendous amount of interest in doing anything with this piece of property, so it ended up at the, the hill. In fact, one of the, and, and this isn't an argument, but one of the things that I found interesting was, and it did provide screening, the affection for the wooded area that had grown up there, which, when I looked at it, I saw honeysuckle, a lot of poison ivy, and a lot of things that I would normally tell you, you need to chew up.
The area, there are photographs in the wintertime that indicated it was junk tree.
Yeah.
It was not, wouldn't fall under the landscape part of the ordinance to preserve trees on land, because he clear-cutted that, you know.
Now, I, we have talked to the developer quite a bit, and there are, I believe, ways to ameliorate a lot of the concerns, but the fundamental one that's, that's quite difficult is the density issue. Because that is, it's the hardest one to deal with, you know, noise, it can make better screening, you can make better, the one that, that's fundamentally difficult is the, the density issue, and...
I think that's, I think that's a residence concern, they, no one's opposed to developing. We need housing, and, but the density of that housing, and the amount of traffic with a hundred and fifty, up to a hundred and fifty cars coming and going down Farmington Lane, makes it for, difficult. And if you look at the intersection of Farmington Lane, there's a number of intersections that come out there, and I can see that being a real traffic issue.
Yeah, in the long term, what should have occurred, and we tried to do it, and it's a good example of, it made sense to a lot of people at the time. When Trotters Point was developed, there's a house there now, but the developer had acquired a lot on Farmington, because he assumed that we would logically require a connection other than Highland Avenue. And there was extreme objection to that. And unfortunately, that got on the list of ways to make the development more amenable to the neighbors. That was one of the things that got taken off the list, which is quite honestly, instead of, Tom, that's one thing that we, we shouldn't have done, and, but we did it, and you can't turn back the clock, because the lot's been sold, there's a house now. But that whole development area forces you to the highway in ways that are not very logical.
Yeah.
But that is something we'll continue to talk with the developer about, but I, I mean, to kind of summarize, unless a considerable carrot is offered, you're not gonna get a whole lot further, what boils down to. And I think, what did Bill Beatty tell me to do? I think he sold the property at least twice. I mean, it's changed hands a couple of times. But no, that is something we'll continue to talk to him about, and he, at this point in time, to my knowledge, hadn't even at this point in time applied for a permit to install, which would be underwater suicide, which... For sake of argument, let's say that developer got really impatient and pressed the issue, and, I don't know, proceeded in court to make us make a decision instead of sort of hedging the bet right now. And we did. And he pushed on engineer, be a little, it'd be a couple of months before he had an F-1, because your PTI is gonna take three months.
PTI is gonna take a long time.
So you got some opportunity that we can continue, have a discussion, but I don't want to hold out. Tremendous hopes there, to be quite honest.
Is it possible the city could buy it for parking there?
I know what he's been offered by a third party, so I would assume he'd want more than that. It would be the most incredibly expensive parking in the history of Washington Court, I'll tell you that. Because I would guess that you'd have to offer north of seven hundred thousand dollars.
Six acres?
Yep.
Of junk?
Yep.
They paid it a hundred and seventy for it.
Uh-huh.
Last year.
But he, he's gotten...
All he's done is wreck, just left.
He's gotten two, I think, two decent offers of north of one seventy, or north of seven hundred, I'm sorry, which to me is bizarre, but...
It's unreasonable.
Anything else?
Uh, no.
Well, I will just say that I live at eleven twenty-two Farmington Lane. The only thing that bothers me that was said tonight is that we're ignoring things to give him a break.
Right. That's what we're upset about.
That bothers me.
We're getting...
I am not letting him do something. I'm saying, we have been told that this is the way it is. I'm talking about these people right here. I'm not giving him any kind of a deal, so I just want to make that clear. I obviously don't want it.
We're all being...
Well, let me say this...
But I don't like to say, you're giving him a deal and, and it's not fair.
Yeah, Mr...
We're told, this is the way it is. That's what we're told. If I could do something, I'd do it.
There, there's something here that, you know, when I read, read the ordinance...
I know.
What the ordinance says and what is permitted, I didn't understand at the time that he could do up to the maximum of thirty-five hundred square foot per unit, and put as many in as he wanted, as long as he can take care of the drainage, the roads, the infrastructure, so...
Nobody else on this council cares more about this than I do. If I had any way, but I'm not giving him a break because of who it is. I'm giving him a break because this is the law, I can't change it.
Right.
If I could, I would. So that's what bothers me. Don't say that I'm doing something for him, because I'm not.
Okay.
I would definitely not do that.
Yeah. Mr. Lynch, some of what the conflict stems from. One, this type of thing is, it's very typical that it is an emotional, difficult issue for people. I can remember when those condominiums were emotional, difficult issues.
Well, sure, Trotters Point was built, there was an argument about that, too.
And, you know, that, that's perfectly acceptable, because from the people that live there, they get very used to the neighborhood they live in, and you introduce this element of the unknown. And Hugh knows that I, I can't guarantee the future, okay? You know, I can't guarantee that, oh, Hugh, you're gonna love this apartment development, and it'll be wonderful people, and you'll start a bike club with them, and, you know, sit around your fire in your backyard and pop popcorn, and, you know, I can't guarantee that type of future. And when you read the ordinance, you have this section at the beginning, but then when you continue, it gives you this density calculation. And folks like Rod, being, you know, good little bureaucrat that he is, he's always applied the density calculation, because it's a nice way to get to an actual number. There's not this amorphous, consistent with the area. Where does the area begin and end? You know, you got this nice little bureaucratic, okay, we take this lot area and we do the math, and this is the number we come up with. So I can understand, I imagine the first time that somebody like Hugh read the ordinance is that they read the beginning of it, and they think to themselves, oh, nothing to worry about. Everything's hunky-dory and comfortable, fine, and then there's a discussion about this number that makes them all uncomfortable, and then you look at it some more, and there's this, this calculation thing. You know, at the end of the story, unfortunately, for at least a period of time, in my experience, nobody is at all happy. Developer will not be happy for a while, residents won't be happy for a while. Now, you can have nice outcomes, like Trotters Point gets built, condominiums out there, and everybody's okay with that, and that, that's fine. But for a while, everybody's going to feel fundamentally like it was their boat that got the hole knocked in it. And that is, some of it's human nature, but a lot of it's you've introduced into an area that's established and very comfortable, an element of the unknown, that reasonable people know that you can't guarantee the future.
What are you gonna do about the safety issue traveling along Farmington Lane with all those extra cars coming down through there? It's gonna tear the road up. Even after it's built, it's not gonna maintain all that traffic. Who's responsible for that?
If you needed to resurface the road, it would be the city. But the, the one thing, if you, we'll go out and do this tomorrow. If we measure curb back to curb back of Farmington Lane, and let's say Glen Avenue, where you got apartments and some other uses, I believe that they'll be exactly the same size.
Glen Avenue goes out right, it doesn't go through a residential neighborhood. My granddaughter lives there. I know where that one's at.
Well, it makes the big loop...
I guess, play around.
Well, I guess what she's saying, what I'm saying is that all the other apartment buildings that are structures or facilities that are in the city, none of them empty exclusively on a residential street. They all are on a state route, Leesburg, Highland, Glen Avenue, right into sixty-two, they're all have direct access to a major thoroughfare, not going through a residential area. So I think that is one of the biggest concerns, is the number of cars that will be coming down Farmington Lane, you know, to exit onto forty-one, and traffic back up, because right now, it can be, there are certain times a day, it can be a considerable wait, as you know, to get out. So then what the people will do naturally is they'll go down to Greenview, and then to Courtney, and then out at the point down there, which won't be any, much better.
It's all come out, same...
But, I mean, you know, traffic is something that needs to be considered, and I'm just hopeful that some sort of a compromise can be made. And we've all made that clear here, and at our meetings, that we've had, community meetings, is that we're willing to compromise, we understand it's R3. But what I, I didn't understand coming into this meeting is that the zoning board had the authority to say, yes, it's R3, but because of traffic and existing use, we can limit, we can't just do the math.
Yeah, what they...
Divide six, six, three hundred and twenty-eight thousand square feet by thirty-five hundred and come up with seventy-two, and that's the number.
You would think that...
But that, I've taken enough of your time, and I appreciate you being patient.
I'm patient.
Do you have a copy of that ordinance?
We can give it to you.
And you give me a copy, I'd just like to see it.
Don't have a problem with that.
Okay.
Here, I'll give you one now.
Okay.
I think you...
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And Della, you're up to bat.
She's got her hair, yeah.
Oh, she's got it.
I hope you bat better than the Reds I've been lately.
I don't know, don't count on it. I'm Della Kestner Key, and my address is one three one one Farmington Lane. I too thank you for letting me speak tonight. I was listening to Mr. Barnhill's comments and things, and one of my things was to Mr. Johnson, is, is that you talked about the Constitution. What is our constitutional right from this perspective, out of curiosity?
The thing about the Constitution is it really isn't there to limit an individual versus an individual. It's to limit an individ, the, the power that a group of people, such as a government, can have against the individual. And so, in this case, more so... more so, it's protecting the individual against a group of people. And in that way, if the residents there are collectively a group of people, then if we think about the way the Constitution works, it's doing exactly what we would expect the Constitution to do, which is to protect that individual interest, and that's what's hard to get around.
Okay, I'm, I'm, again, I'm, everything Mr. Barnhill said, I, I could not repeat it. It's, I agree with it, I, I truly do. I, I don't know, I do know that Quail Run is not going to take this city down. They are just not going to do that, I, I promise you that. I can stand here and I can truthfully say that. I also, with that being said, would, I did go to the fair and I was there every day, 'cause I.
I was too, and I didn't see you.
I was there, I was there actually in the Mayhem Building, doing the booth. And I happened to be kitty-corner from the Honda plant. So I talked to every person that worked at the Honda plant table. And this is what one of them said to me. They said, when we decided on Fayette County and Washington Courthouse and Jeffersonville and Jefferson Township, they go, we didn't come with the intention of bringing hardship. And I explained to them that we are excited that they are here coming. And we truly are, and we understand development. And we're not, as Mr. Barnhill said, opposed to that. But I do feel that, that people could go back, the powers that be can go back to the drawing board, and instead of putting up something as ridiculous as apartments, put up condos. We're not opposed to development. The other thing that the Honda people said was that they knew that housing was going to be an issue and a problem. They did not realize how much of an issue and a problem it was. They had, they said they have, I, they said they have fifty construction workers and thirty Honda people that are currently employed and working in Fayette County on a daily basis. And so, the math is eighty people. And so, are all of them living in Fayette County, somewhere in Fayette County? No, because as they explained to me, they can't find housing in Fayette County. That they are, that they are looking, I, I mean, they're in Yellow Springs, they're in Xenia, they're in Dayton and they're driving and they're not excited about that, but it is a place to live and it is closer than Marysville, driving back and forth. They said that they would hope that Fayette County would be a little bit like Marysville in that. And I thought I had been through Marysville, but apparently I hadn't. So I'm, we're gonna take a little drive and we're going to take and see what Marysville is all about and, and, and kind of go from there ourselves as to what our next steps are. But along with that being said, I, I also want to let you all know that the Ford plant is also putting up a battery plant, and I don't know if you are aware of this, but it is in Marshall, Michigan. And Marshall is running into the same problems that we all are. You all might want to check that out, just a suggestion. 'Cause I thought that was very, an, a very enlightening conversation I had with someone from Michigan and actually a company that we had. And until they had come and they had talked about that and we had talked about the Honda plant, I had no idea. But Ford Battery Plant is running into the same problem. And Marshall, Michigan is running into a housing issue as well. So I don't know if this was just a coincidence, that I happened to know this, but I thought it was a coincidence. So I don't know. There's, there's gotta be a different answer other than these apartments. I, I really believe, we're not opposed to development, there's just got to be. And like Kendra said, it, it, we need to come together and talk. I don't know that that's going to happen. And I, I wish it would and I wish we could all be on the same page, but probably not gonna happen. So, thank you for your time, I appreciate it.
Della, we had the opportunity, several of us, to go to Marysville. You'll be very impressed with their downtown area that's happened mostly because of Honda. And they are even running into problems now, because people in Marysville are worried that Marysville's getting too big. And so, they're, they have people fighting over building more housing and all that kind of stuff. So it's a problem both ways. And so, but you'll be impressed with what they've done. All their city buildings and stuff are very impressive.
Are people more interested in rentals or deed-in properties?
Uh, both.
It, it could be, go either way.
Rentals right now, as people are building and things like that, rentals are better. But as people come, they want to live in the community and, so both.
Right now, there's four units here in Washington Courthouse that the Honda people are living in and they're paying forty-five hundred dollars a month.
Why don't they build a house? There's several in our neighborhood for sale.
Yeah, well, they're just here temporarily, but they're, they're forty-five hundred dollars a month. I found that out from the owner of the building. He said he was asking twenty-two hundred and they ended up paying him forty-five hundred. If you want to see a housing development, go forty-two, outside of London, outside of Plain City. Go straight out of Plain City, like you're going up towards Delaware. You're gonna see, out in the middle of nowhere, out in the middle of nowhere, houses after houses and building and building and building and building everywhere out there on forty-two before you get into Delaware. It is absolutely, I've never seen anything like it. I mean, there's, there's got to be five hundred of them going up right now up through there.
That's why people.
They're coming in from Marysville and from Columbus to live in these places. There's houses, there's duplexes, everything.
Because it's a quiet neighborhood, they're trying to get away from all that.
Yeah.
That's the problem.
Yeah, that's exactly.
We're gonna make it just like that.
Yeah. You can't stop progress, it's difficult to stop progress.
I saw there's a large corporation that's building subdivisions, nice houses, that are all relevant.
Yep, yep. It's amazing. It's, once it starts, it's difficult to stop, I guarantee. I ran into the same thing thirty years ago in a development up outside of Springfield. I bought a house outside of Springfield, thought that was out in the country, nowhere around it. And it was on the street, about like Farmington Lane, and I had the last house on the end. And they put up.
Pay attention to where this stuff is going.
They put up, yeah. It was an empty lot, big empty lot, about fifteen acres right beside me. And I thought about it, I asked the neighbors, what are they gonna do with that? And they said, oh, it's just farmland. Next thing, I come home one day and all these trucks were back there. I sold the house the next week and come back to Washington Courthouse.
Okay, that's exactly what.
Yeah.
Can I ask one question real quick? Do we have any other builders in town trying to build as many, or build more homes and stuff like that?
We will have.
Well, we will have, but we don't have any yet right now. I mean, what?
Yeah.
Holidays are doing a small extension with some of the property that they have.
It's coming.
You have several shopping around at the moment, quite honestly, for ground. One of the reasons that we want to annex that Bryant property with a nice long-range plan is so, to the extent that you possibly can, you limit the situation that we're in now. Now, if that development occurs over a twenty-year timeframe, I'm sure at some point in time, you know, someone will be surprised when the next phase starts. And you know, the answer that they're gonna get back is, you know, twenty years ago, we decided what was gonna happen. But it's to alleviate pressure, development pressure, so that it occurs in a planned way that's aesthetically attractive and that area is large enough and still part of the community, but removed enough to that you, you're not gonna have the pressure that you run into when you develop residential next to an existing residential neighborhood.
See, that's what, exactly why we're here, because that's not what happened. You're getting this development back there that does not go with the rest of our neighborhood, so the planning commission is not working.
Well, twenty years ago, they rezoned that from a commercial to the R three.
It was supposed to be exited the other way, not down Farmington.
I don't know.
If we get that property, can we say to this, we'll trade you, you can have some land out there. Okay, we have legislation here. Uh, we have, first of all, previously introduced, and we're starting with ordinance number six, twenty-twenty-three, uh, third reading.
I'll move to place ordinance number six, twenty-twenty-three on a third, third reading.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Ordinance number six dash two thousand and twenty-three, and ordinance authorizing directing Christina Collins to create accounting funds.
Move for passage.
Second.
Roll call.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Resolution, number R twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-three, second reading.
I'll make a motion to remove R twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-three from the table.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
I'll second that. Yeah, 'cause we gotta remove it from the table before we can do anything with it.
Yes, we do. I don't think there's discussion of that, is there? Just a motive. Roll call.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Now.
Question.
Oh, okay.
Are you sure you wanted to vote yes, Caleb?
I think technically it's just
Remove it from the table.
From the table, not on the thing itself, right?
That's correct.
Yeah.
What, can I ask, was this tabled last time when we were?
Why was the table?
'Cause Caleb can't vote.
Oh, and he, so that wouldn't have given enough votes.
Oh, you only hit three of that one, okay, okay.
I was wondering the same thing.
Yeah, I never thought of that. Okay, that's a good point. That's a good point.
So now, we can have a motion for the second reading.
Yes.
I'll make a motion for second reading on resolution number tw- R twenty-seven, twenty-twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Discussion.
Roll call.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
abstain.
Schultz.
Uh, yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Lynch.
Uh, yes.
Resolution number R twenty-seven dash two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution authorizing Joseph J. Denon, city manager of the city of Washington Courthouse, to enter into an agreement with the Fayette County Commissioners for provision of public defender services.
Move for adoption.
Second.
Roll call.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
abstain.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Resolution number R thirty-two, twenty-twenty-three, second reading.
I'll move, we put a, a resolution R thirty-two, twenty-twenty-three on second reading.
Second.
And discussion. Roll call.
Hawk. Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Resolution number R thirty-two dash two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution confirming Joseph J. Denon, city manager of the city of Washington Courthouse, reappointment of Mr. Dane Blamer to the Historic District Review Board of the city of Washington Courthouse for a term concluding December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-six.
Move for adoption.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Resolution number R thirty-three, twenty-twenty-three, second reading.
I'll move to replace resolution number R thirty-three, twenty-twenty-three on second reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hawk.
Hernandez. Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Resolution number R thirty-three dash two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution authorizing Joseph J. Denon, city manager of the city of Washington Courthouse, to make available to the employees of the city, a Roth four-fifty-seven option retirement account.
Move for adoption.
I'll second that.
Roll call.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes. Moving to new legislation, first is ordinance seven, twenty-twenty-three, first reading.
I'll move, we put ordinance seven, twenty-twenty-three on first reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Ordinance number six dash two thousand and twenty-three, and ordinance authorizing and directing Christina Collins to create accounting funds. Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I read the wrong one. Ordinance seven, twenty-twenty-three, and ordinance accepting annexation on applications of owners and establishing original zoning districts of fifty-point-ninety acres. Sorry, put my checkbook in the wrong place.
There we go, and we have resolution number R thirty-four, twenty-twenty-three, it should be.
I'll move to replace resolution number R thirty-four, twenty-twenty-three, on first reading.
I'll second that.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Resolution number R thirty-four dash two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution confirming Joseph J. Denon, city manager of the city of Washington Courthouse, reappointment of Beth Gerber to the Carnegie Public Library Board of Trustees to fulfill an unexpired term concluding December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-seven.
Resolution number R thirty-five, twenty-twenty-three, first reading.
I'll move to replace resolution number R thirty-five, twenty-twenty-three, on first reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Resolution number R thirty-five dash two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution confirming Joseph J. Denon, city manager of the city of Washington Courthouse, reappointment of William Harris to the Carnegie Public Library Board of Trustees with a term concluding December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-seven.
Resolution number R thirty-six, twenty-twenty-three, first reading.
I'll move that we place resolution number R thirty-six, twenty-twenty-three, on first reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Resolution number R thirty-six dash two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution confirming Joseph J. Denon, city manager of the city of Washington Courthouse, reappointment of Jeanne Ann Davis to the Carnegie Public Library Board of Trustees with a term concluding December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-seven.
Resolution number R thirty-seven, twenty-twenty-three, first reading.
I'll move that we put a resolution R thirty-seven, twenty-twenty-three on first reading.
Second.
Discussion. Roll call.
Hawk.
Yes.
Hernandez.
Yes.
Johnson.
Yes.
Schultz.
Yes.
Blair.
Yes.
Christman.
Yes.
Lynch.
Yes.
Resolution number R thirty-seven dash two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution confirming Joseph J. Denon, city manager of the city of Washington Courthouse, reappointment of Marge Hall to the Carnegie Public Library Board of Trustees with a term concluding December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-seven.
And resolution number R thirty-eight, twenty-twenty-three, first reading.
I move we place resolution number R thirty-eight, twenty-twenty-three, on first reading.
Second.
Discussion. I can hardly wait for Kelly to read this one. Discussion. Discussion.
Oh, my gosh.
Right.
Good luck, put your glasses on.
Roll call.
Hawk?
Yes.
Hernandez?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Schultz?
Yes.
Blair?
Yes.
Christman?
Yes.
Lynch?
Yes.
Get some popcorn.
Resolution number R thirty-eight dash two thousand and twenty-three, a resolution concerning services to property proposed for annexation of four seventy point seven zero five acres. Parcel numbers, one nine zero dash zero two five dash zero dash zero zero dash zero zero two dash zero zero. One nine zero dash zero one eight dash zero dash zero zero dash zero two two dash zero zero. One ninety dash zero two five dash zero dash zero zero dash zero two three dash zero zero. One ninety dash zero one eight dash zero dash zero zero dash zero two five dash zero zero. One ninety dash zero one eight dash zero dash zero zero dash zero two seven dash zero zero. One ninety dash zero two five dash zero dash zero zero dash zero zero three dash zero two. One ninety dash zero one eight dash zero dash zero zero dash zero two six dash zero zero, from Union Township Fayette County to the city of Washington Courthouse, Ohio.
Did you repeat the third one?
Thank our attorney for that one.
All right.
You'll be seeing zeros.
Mr. Johnson, what do you have for us this evening?
Um, thank you, everyone, for coming. I know that there were some topics that maybe a little disagreement on, but, um, in particular, thank you to you, Della, for asking me a question about the Constitution. I love talking about the Constitution, so I appreciate the opportunity.
I think there was a government lesson tonight. So, um, unfortunately, sometimes we can't change what we wanna change, unfortunately. So, um, and I, you know, I, I'm sorry, that's all I can say, I'm sorry. Um, that, but on a good note, Friday night is a shop hop, and it's Battle of the Bands, which is three different counties, or two other counties besides us. Shop hop starts at five, the bands start at seven thirty. There's a really cool trivia contest about the band members, or the bands themselves, between five and seven thirty at your different shops. So you'll kind of get to know your band before you hear them. Um, very excited. Stephanie from Travel and Tourism has worked very hard on bringing this in, and then we've just kind of piggybacked on her, so it's been an easy shop hop for us. But, um, I would love to see faces and chairs going down to the concert, or the stage is gonna be where the Scarecrow Festival stage normally is, which is down, um, at the end of Main Street by East Street. Um, so I'm excited, I would love for it to be packed for Stephanie, cuz she's worked her booty off, so please support if you can.
Mr. Johnson? You know, it, it's, it's kind of exciting to be in Washington Courthouse right now with everything that's going on, and it, growing pains are always pains, a lot of pains. I mean, all of us, most of us sitting up here right now, we can remember when they started the project on Carolyn Road, and River Road, and all that over in there. I remember, I was just little, my parents talking about it, and all the traffic that's gonna put on Carolyn, cuz we lived there on Carolyn Road at that time. And the, then Bel Air happened about the same time. And then come along, what was it, uh, might have been Storybrooke, and then Quail Run, you know, there was always conversation about the traffic and all the extra people coming to town, and it was, it's a conversation, it's difficult, it's extremely difficult. And, and like we've all said up here, we, we wish we could do more about it, but we can't, you can't, you can't stop progress. If you try to stop progress, the people are gonna say, don't come to Washington Courthouse, they don't want you. So don't even try it, because they don't want you over there. They won't give you any kind of breaks at all, they won't do anything for you. So it is, it, it, it's difficult, it, it's, it's a two-sided sword that you can't get away from, you get cut either way. So it is, uh, it's something we have to accept, I know we don't like it sometimes, uh, there is some things we can do from time to time, but not a lot, once it's put in place. So, uh, it's, uh, but it's exciting time right now to be in Washington Courthouse, the next five to seven years, we're all gonna see a change, but we all have lived through change, that's what you do in your life, you change, is things change, things change, and that's what keeps life going, I think, so, that's what I got, thank you very much. Mr. Blair?
A great improvement downtown, I noticed. Have you noticed with the beer in barrel, or whatever bourbon in barrel is gonna be?
Smoking.
Smoke in barrel, used to be that plywood playing well. An unnamed artist painted that over with a nice, beautiful landscape. And, uh, he's present with us here tonight, so I wanna commend him for taking a little bit of initiative to improve the downtown, especially beside Kendra's business there, that's a real improvement for you, Kendra.
I'd really like it to be a restaurant, but hey.
Yeah.
Sorry, Remington, but you know.
Okay, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Mr. Hawk?
This annexation that we did with all these zeros in it, uh, there's a chance to do it right this time, and, and I think there's been a lot of planning done on this, so I hope that we are able to foresee all the pitfalls we might run into, and I, I really think there's a big effort done that way, in planning that, uh, big piece of land. Also, I'll almost guarantee you, there'll be some campaigning on progress in our town. Well, and you see, Marysville, they got all this progress, now they wanna slow it down. So, I don't know where I was going with that, but anyway.
Be careful what you wish for.
Yes. Yeah, be careful what you wish for.
You write your notes on the back here.
No.
I better stop. I better stop.
Mr. Christman?
Thank you, I'd like to thank everybody for coming, it's been an interesting and informative evening. Um, that's all I have, but anyway, thanks again for coming, good to see you.
Uh, I would just say that, I'll repeat what I said in committee, I thought the handling of paving the court street was done very well. I mean, yes, it created some problems, but in general, when you think about paving the most important street in town, and the way it got done, and the speed it got done with, and it's nice, um, I congratulate all involved with that. It was as painless as could be, and so that's, that's really good. Uh, second, I don't know who said it, that we don't, we don't agree, I agree one hundred percent with Mr. Barnhill and Kestrel Keys and everybody, I do not want seventy-two apartments at the end of Farmington Lane. The only thing that upsets me is when people say, you're doing something that you wouldn't do for anybody else. If I had a way of stopping it, I would stop it, but I can't right now. I would love to sit down with the developer and just talk to them about, can we do something a little different? Uh, Joe, I can set up a meeting with me, I would be glad to talk to him, but don't accuse me of doing something that's not, I, I don't want them, I agree with everybody. Uh, and it's gonna be, when it happens, and if it happens, it's gonna be bad, all the way around, from construction to everything. The other thing is, and I have on the record said this every time there's been an election for city council, I am always, whether I'm running, or whether it's the period that I'm not running, I always encourage people to run for city council, it's important. Now, if you're going to run for city council, everybody out there, because today was the day that petitions had to be in to run. If you're going to run, and I've done, I've helped people, given them advice, helped them when they were running against me, that's how interested I am in people running for city council. But if you're going to run, show an interest. The last time, two years ago, we had people running that had never been to a city council meeting, ever. And furthermore, didn't even take the time to take out a petition.
True.
Show some interest if you're going to run, show up. How else do you know what's going on in the city? The last thing is, if you're gonna run for city council, understand that it's not about one thing.